We'll call this session into order, please. Roll call?
Commissioner Decker.
Here.
Densberger.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Call.
Here.
Mayor Mingus.
Here.
I'll present your honor.
Thank you very much. Of course, this is the continuance of our budget planning discussion. No further action can be taken. I'll turn over to Commissioner Densberger for any comments you might have.
Day two of the budget conversations, we've got, gonna hear from, I think, most of it. Every department that has yet to go, we've got police, fire, planning and zoning, and so forth. So we'll probably finish up the departments tonight, maybe have at least a preliminary conversation about the capital budget. So with that, Jeff, who we got first? Is it Chief Knapp?
Yeah, Chief Knapp first.
We promised he three minutes, is that what he said? Looking forward to it, Chief.
We'll go ahead and start off with the ESDA, ESDA budget in front of you on page eight. The only thing that you're gonna notice on that, under the line item of 160, is a new siren. Basically what that is, we've got some recommendations from our vendor that handles all the sirens for ESDA, to begin replacing some of the outdated sirens, which actually date back in excess of 30, 35 years. We have three particular units that they are recommending that we replace as soon as we can, in an effort to be cost-conscious. I talked to Jeff about going ahead and replacing one of those out per year for the next three years. So that's, that's what you're looking at as far as the expense on the ESDA, where the ESDA changes.
That's all we have for the ESDA side of things, as far as expenses. Everything else, again, is just routine, routine maintenance and repairs. Any questions on that before I move over to fire?
Chief, I know Chief Service had discussed in the past, I'll say, holes in the service area of the sirens. Have those pretty much been addressed at this point? So this is simply replacing old equipment?
Correct. We've got, everything that we have in place right now is sufficient. That's what I'm being told, and that's what I'm reading at this point. What we have are a number of devices that are now very old, and we need to start replacing them out.
Okay.
And again, like any other electrical device, or any other item, they get old, they do require maintenance, there are pieces and parts that do go bad, we'll replace them as needed.
Okay.
Anything else for ESDA? All right, moving over to fire protection, on page 11, pages 11 and 12. You'll notice as far as the actual amounts, 3,900,000, everything, everything in this particular budget from top to bottom is very flat. As we've had discussions in the past, I've, I've worked with both of the chiefs, and actually, all the chiefs, and the department to do everything we can to keep everything as tight as we possibly can, realizing that last year was, was quite a struggle financially in expenses, particularly overtime, which we're trying to address. One change that, that we did discover through Jill's assistance in going through a lot of the expenses, the actual amount being 3,900,000, $35,000, slightly less than the 950 that you have listed in front of you, so $15,000 difference. Also, you notice the overtime is significantly less. When we talked before about personnel changes, that's, that's to address that. I anticipate that barring any significant surprises, we should have some success in that area. Other than that, new hire training, because we do have a significant number of new hires, Jeff and I did talk about the necessity, at least for, for comfort measures at this point, to try and keep things in line, but that would be about a $5,000 difference, being 35,000 versus the 30 that you have in front of you. Dropping down to any other significant changes under 49, information technology, you may all recall that we, we've got a couple new programs, one of them being, one that is working out very well with Target Solutions, which will be implemented with that, which necessitated a $5,000 increase. Line item below that, maintenance repair of buildings. Working with Robert Cole on that, he has been a tremendous asset of recommendations on cost savings. We're gonna have some window replacements coming up in, in public safety that will be coming up. We've got some other projects over the next two or three years, I think, that will, again, not only will there be some nominal expenses to it, but I think we'll see some savings on the back end of it, which is what we're looking for.
Hey, Chiefs, just real quick, if you don't mind me asking, that roof repair, was that built into the, into the budget?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Moving on to the next page.
Chief, one other thing on page 11, maintenance and repair of vehicles, you know, in 17, it was 32,000. 18, it went up to 110, we budgeted, you know, were projected at 176 for this year.
Yes, sir.
You've got 115. Does that reflect the issues with the engines and the frame rails?
It does. Thank you for bringing that up. Yes, as all of you may recall, we had an issue going on with Pierce Manufacturing, some, some issues with the frame rails that we did address with Engine One, which is now back in service. They did a great job on those repairs. Since that time, I have been in contact with the brass of Pierce Manufacturing. They have agreed moving forward to reduce some of the expenses moving forward on the two, two remaining engines that need to be repaired, which I think all total about $60,000 that they're, they're gonna be crediting back to us.
Okay.
On the, on the future repairs. Keeping in mind, when they do these disassemblies, for lack of a better way of putting it, and they go in and do the, do the repairs, there are items at that time that they are gonna make recommendations that we, that we fix, and we will do that. It's one that, when they're completely disassembled, there is no better time to address some of those items. But that is the number that we're referring to.
Thank you.
Anything else on page 11? Moving on to page 12, you will notice under operating equipment purchases, under 160, two monitors. That, that is the more recent purchase of those monitors, and obviously we've already had possession of them. That's gonna be the paying for portion of those monitors. And that was part of the six months interest-free financing that we had agreed upon back a month or two ago. And again, overall expenses for the, the budget year, it's, it's gonna be as flat as we can possibly keep it, and expect that we will be doing more of the same in the next couple of years. Any questions on anything on page 12?
Just to comment on our question, I know we had the rebuild, repair of the trucks, engines, and so forth. And I believe it was written or said that you anticipated that would, I mean, we hated to see it happen, but we had to do it. But the, is the good side is that we get a little extra life out of that vehicle?
Correct.
Looking forward.
Yes, sir. Yeah. What we try to, to keep in mind is there is a reasonable lifespan on all this equipment. Generally speaking, if it were a perfect world, we would try and have these engines frontline for a period of 10, maybe 15 years, worst case, put them back into reserve for the remaining five years, realizing that in about 20 years, things are to the point that we're gonna be spending more money on than they're worth. When we start talking about capital expenses, and we start talking about ladder trucks, and we start talking about engines, the ladder truck in particular, service life recommendation is about 25 years, and they're essentially worthless at that point. A lot of times, they're very difficult to pass all the required tests that we need to have them operate safely. So that's, we're, we're coming upon some things moving forward that I personally, and we as a command staff, have some real concerns about, making sure that we're moving forward in a manner that's gonna be cost-effective, yet at the same time, unfortunately, there is, there is a limit to how long they're gonna last. Any other questions on, on the vehicles? All right, thank you.
Next up, we have police.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
So this year, the police department has a couple wild cards, I think, need to be addressed, and, and we need to find a way to address them in the budget. Obviously, every, every department is focusing and concentrating on capital expenses. We're, we're no different in that respect. The requests we're making on the capital side, you know, since we got no squad cars last year, obviously, our request indicates, you know, making up for that. But I will bring up, you know, kind of a glaring issue with our replacement program, and why it's important to at least try to maintain a significant number of squad cars. We presently have largely changed over to the Ford Explorer platform. It's been very successful, it's very well-received, they've held up very well. Only, only our 2017s remain under warranty, since we bought none last year, so only our 2017 Explorers have any warranty. We are still running on a daily basis, I think it's 11 of the Chevy and Palace, 2011s, 2013s, there are no, no 2012s, that run on a daily basis. We are now experiencing significant maintenance problems with those vehicles. The fact of the matter is, in a vehicle maintenance budget of about $50,000, it looks like we're gonna spend by the end of this year, over half of that on those 11 Impalas. And that will only get worse with the number of those Impalas that remain on the road next year. They all, one by one, experience the same issues. Just last week, we had to drop $4,700 into one of them, $3,700 into another one, just to keep them on the road and keep officers in them. So I, I bring that up. I understand that every department in this city has significant capital needs. That certainly sums up, I think, where our capital needs lie. I think, short of getting rid of those Impalas, then we're gonna have to look at, you know, some, some significant increase in the maintenance budget to try to keep those vehicles running. The other wild cards this year, as you can kind of see from, from our, our budgets in front of you, is probably by the end of this month, it's been a moving target, but by the end of this month, we anticipate that our dispatch center will finally be gone. They haven't really been our dispatchers now for a few months, but they should be physically gone from our department by the end of this month, or if not that, shortly thereafter. And as we've discussed before, that creates certain issues, not the least of which is, how do you replace some of the functions that they do? We did some of that earlier this year in hiring a records supervisor, and one other records clerk. We do not think that that's going to be adequate for two reasons. Once dispatch leaves, then all of their functions, including talking to the public, you know, in that respect, are going to be gone. We're gonna have a significant number of hours at our department, that there will be nobody there at the window if we do not hire somebody to be there. That's gonna be, you know, obviously, a customer service issue, something that's gonna be quite different for us, and quite different for the citizens of East Peoria. But the biggest wildcard, I think, when it comes to our needing more records personnel, and we're, we are requesting, not necessarily both at the same time, but I think it's conservative to think that we will probably need two additional records clerks as the year progresses. The biggest push on that is going to be the body cameras. We've been maybe not so patiently waiting to get the technology things in place that we can start our program. All our officers are trained, we have all the equipment, we have been ready to go for some time. We've been put on hold recently by IDOT and having to, you know, do something with the fiber connection between our buildings and, and Peoria City. That's been done now. Peoria City is doing some work on their end to be able to receive our information and store it. And so it could be as, you know, I, I, again, anticipate by the end of the month, we should be prepared to go live with our body cameras. What that is going to do, from a personnel standpoint, is create a tremendous amount of information that must be managed, and in accordance with the body camera law that the state has passed. And so that's new territory for us, completely new territory. And I'll be honest with you, we do not, I don't think, have our heads completely wrapped around of the impact that that's actually gonna have on personnel. Not just in managing the day-to-day information, but particularly when it comes to the impact the Freedom of Information Act will have, and the lengthy time it takes or can take to redact and edit video. The body camera package comes with redaction software. The idea was to make it as user-friendly as possible. We don't know how user-friendly it is right now. I suspect it's like anything else, the first few times you do it, it's not very user-friendly, and it'll become more friendly as time goes on. But I think it'd be naive to sit here and think that we're going to, you know, put it on our two only records people right now to do their job and this job. I would remind all of us that the, our two, our two records people are replacing essentially 12 records people. And they're doing a great job. I commend them for the wonderful job that they are doing under, they have to work quite hard to do it. But the fact of the matter is, they are doing the same work that 12 different people did just, you know, a few months ago. So that is certainly going to have an impact. As you can see, there is, you know, the, while I don't think the fees are chiseled in stone yet, that we'll have to pay to the TC3 dispatch center, there's a pretty significant decrease in what we are going to pay them, as opposed to what we were paying our dispatchers and their overtime and their benefits. So I think there's some savings there.
Not, not as much as you got here.
Yeah.
I'll just tell you, the new fees.
You would know, I know what the new fees are.
So you have 650 down here. East Peoria's fees for this next year will be 667,114, as long as the board approves that on the 22nd, the governance board. So if that helps you out there.
Those are our costs, yeah.
Yeah, that'll be East Peoria's share, unless something changes before now and then, but I don't suspect it will.
So those, those will certainly drive, we've added some money in relation to the dispatch center, also under maintenance and repair of buildings, 050, on page 10 at the top. That has to do with, you know, with dispatch moving out of our front lobby area. All the councils that they now have in there, all that equipment will be removed. Our intention is, right now, we are looking at moving our records people into that room. I don't think they'll take any, I don't think it's gonna be an extensive remodel, but there'll need to be some, some amount of remodeling done to accommodate that. Moving them, they are now situated in our investigations division. Moving them to the lobby accomplishes two things. It allows us to expand our investigation division so that our, for example, our investigator sergeant no longer would have to share an office with another investigator. But it'll also give us at least a certain amount of coverage at our front window for a certain number of hours during the day. And we're also still intend, within the next few weeks, to having a phone or some sort of, you know, mechanism put into the lobby, so that when no one is there, when the dispatchers are gone, that people will have the ability to pick up a phone in the lobby, and it'll ring down to the Morton Dispatch Center. I don't, I'll be honest with you, I don't like that. I don't, but I don't like anything about the dispatch consolidation. So I might, I think that's, I think it's poor customer service that a city of this size has to turn people away, you know, at seven o'clock at night. But at the same time, I'm not sure we're in a position where we wanna pay, you know, officer wages or sergeant's wages to have somebody sit there at the window and talk to the five or six people that may come in. So it's a trade-off. I don't particularly like it, but it's, it's done in other places. It obviously will work, 'cause it has to.
And that move, that move is targeted for like mid-March, isn't it? Is what I understand is they're looking at.
It's a sore subject.
All I can say is, we were told, you know, February, then it was the middle of February, now I talked to the director the other day, and simply asked him a simple question, who's leaving first, me or them? And he said, it looks like I won.
Well, unfortunately, while we're at the mercy of the progress at Morton, that's the biggest holdup.
Yeah, and I know there's other issues involved in that, so.
Chief, do you have any feel for, basically, we're talking about service to the public across the counter from 4:00 PM until, what, 10? Is that the normal thing?
Well, you're probably looking at, I mean, people will come in at all hours of the day. So generally speaking, right now, we have a records clerk, a second shift records clerk, that works till 10:00 PM, you know, Tuesday through Saturday. Of course, there's, she has obviously vacation and days off, but, so right now, at least for five days of the week, we have, you know, about 16 hours of coverage on some days. But there'll be other days that we do not, and we, right now, we will have nobody from 10:00 PM till, what, 7:00?
7:00.
7:00 in the morning.
How many walk-ins do we get?
You know, generally speaking, not a lot during that time, not a lot. So that's the best time to not have to have somebody there, is during that. So, and many times, there is an officer, there may be a sergeant or an officer in the building, so it may be just, you know, I don't think there's gonna be huge lag. The only lag would be, they come in, they need something immediately, dispatch has to call an officer off the street.
And what sort of requests are they?
What's that?
What sort of requests do you get during that timeframe?
A lot of times, it's, they may wanna pay to get a tow, their vehicle out, you know, they have to pay a tow fee, or things like that. They just may need to see an officer, and they're driving by, maybe they had a road rage incident, maybe they've had a domestic, it could be any number of things. They've just got, found out that their credit card got hacked. So they, instead of calling for help, people will just walk in.
Okay.
So I think it's, it'd be, it's very unusual to have an emergency walk-in.
Okay.
So I don't think that's the big concern. I don't, I think it'd be unusual.
But they're not necessarily clerical requests, they may be?
Generally speaking.
Low-level requests for service?
Yeah. I would think, generally speaking, especially at that time of night, it is probably an issue that an officer would handle.
Okay.
Not a clerk.
Okay.
That clerk, for the most part, would be doing the same thing as a dispatcher might do, calling an officer. Other than that, I think everything remains fairly much status quo, so unless somebody has any questions of...
Chief, after, after the dispatchers leave to go to Morton, will the clerks still have direct access to the officers via radio, or will they need to?
Yeah, I think we're, our intention is they'll still have availability of a radio to contact direct.
Okay.
So, yeah, we wouldn't wanna give that up. And we have had our Sallyport upgrades that we talked about a few weeks ago, that has been completed. So the officers now have their own access in and out of our Sallyport, so they're not dependent on dispatch for that. So little by little, we've been weaning ourselves away from, you know, some of the tasks that they do, but it, it will still be quite a difference, quite a change for not only the department, but I think for the public, too.
I have a question or two concerning vehicles. You mentioned the Impalas that were cascading down and out here soon, hopefully, as best we can, as soon as we can. The robustness of the Ford vehicles that we have now, how do they compare?
Well, I think so far, they've been very good. I think mechanically, as you find with some newer vehicles, you find quirks that are kind of annoying in, in the Ford cases of what used to be a simple, you know, to change a headlight, used to be something an officer could do. Go to, you know, Walmart, grab a headlight, plug it in, and you go, is now, I believe, a $600 sealed system from Ford. Thank you.
Wow. I guess my, the reason I ask the question, I, I get how that works, unfortunately. But thinking, do you think, well, I'll just, we'll go back to the Crown Vic days. We didn't really have many Crowns here, I don't think, but they had a, they were a larger vehicle, a little more costly upfront, but they had a good longevity because of the robustness, all right? So their cost per mile maybe was less than, or cost per hour, really, maybe is the best way to look at it, was less than a, a less robust vehicle. I guess I view the SUV-type platform as maybe more robust in its own way, maybe. It does have its quirks or extra maintenance money with lights. You know, there's labor always involved, but yeah, that's, that's a big change from the old days. But just a question that maybe as we move ahead, and no doubt we're headed towards that type of vehicle in the future, of course, but that we actually save money in the future, maybe you can get an extra year rotation out of that, that vehicle versus the Impala, just as a thought.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a very good chance of that. I think you're gonna find they are, have, have much better longevity and hold up stronger. The Impalas, when they start to fade, they fade quite quickly, and they get to, to the point where you really question whether they're safe after. And it really doesn't appear to be so much as amount of miles, it just seems to be more of an age.
Yeah.
An age thing. Now, I don't think there's any, I think Ford has once again kind of cornered the police vehicle market. Over 65% of all the country's police cars are now the Ford Explorer platform. There's a reason for that. cars are now the Ford Explorer platform. There's a reason for that. And I certainly want to, and we're going to see some reduction in costs as we start replacing Ford Explorers with Ford Explorers. We, then we no longer have to buy all the equipment. Much, much of the equipment then can swap out as long as Ford doesn't throw a curve and change the, totally change the dimensions. Whereas right now, when we're still replacing Impalas, we then have to purchase all new equipment.
I guess that's one item that, you know, for departments that have, that run their cars twenty-four seven, they have fewer, but you just replace them more often because you're still wearing them out at the same rate, or actually triple the rate.
Right.
But you don't have the, the individual equipping of those cars for light kits, et cetera. And that may be one advantage of running fewer cars, but longer and harder and over a shorter time. That's a discussion for another day.
Right.
But that's one that, is it, is it cost less per hour running that way? I don't know.
Yeah, it is a give and take because you, like I said, you, you can run your cars twenty-four seven. I've been in a department that, that did that. But after you, once you've established your program, at that point, you're really not saving a lot of money by doing so. Because you're replacing the same number of cars every year. Because if you're running them twenty-four seven, they are done in a year. They're done. And so you're just having to replace all of them anyway. You may save, you're going to have less equipment, you may be able to swap equipment. So you'll have a lot less upfront capital costs doing so. But once your program's established, as long as you keep the program going, then your yearly costs are fairly flat.
I think I ask you about every year, Chief, do you still believe we're in the current way we do things? I guess many more vehicles instead of fewer and replace them more often?
I do. Like I said, I think once the program's set, I, I think, I mean, to not get, you know, a year, another year like last year where nobody gets anything, that would, that would be devastating, I think, to the program. Then we'd really have to look at how we reset from that. So that would be tough. But yeah, I think the program does work. There's, you know, we keep the miles fairly low. I would remind people, while every officer is assigned a vehicle, only those officers that live in the city limits of East Peoria, outside of some investigator who's on call. But every patrol officer who lives outside the city does not take a car home. So the miles stay low, they stay at the department, and they're driven by that officer. So that car has a pretty significant longevity in terms of mileage. It also, a take-home car program gives us tremendous ability to respond to an emergency. For example, you know, going back to the tornado, when you have an emergency of that scale, we were able to put, you know, thirty vehicles or more on scene in a matter of fifteen minutes. That couldn't happen if we only had eight vehicles. So is there a cost? Sure there is, but there's also some, some trade offs that I think are beneficial in terms of preparedness that I would, you know, defend that program as, as long as I possibly could. Did I miss anything, Joe?
Anything else?
Anything else?
Thank you, Chief.
All right.
Thanks very much.
Good afternoon. So we have essentially two departments in one between planning, community development, and public property. So I'd like to go ahead and let Robert Cole start with his budget piece since his has a lot more line items than mine does.
Thank you. Thank you, Ty. I think pretty much we kept the budget pretty flat. I mean, there was.
What page are you on, Robert?
Excuse me?
What page are you on? Sorry.
Page five.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things to maybe point out as far as the possibility of stipend, vehicle stipend for myself. You know, mine's same, same age as Public Works's Ford Escape, so that was something that we're looking into. You know, one of the things that we would like to request in that is a maintenance helper, somebody to, kind of an entry level person that could, could do a lot of the, the smaller tasks within the department, you know, light bulbs and painting and, and stuff like that. We did not put that in, into the budget. I think there was some other discussions that would need to be, take place before that, but we are requesting that. I think everything else on page six, the rest of the budget, we kept pretty, pretty flat. You know, I could touch on building maintenance, oh five oh and oh five one. You know, I think this year, we kind of kept everything in line. But I think in the probably twenty, twenty and probably twenty-one, is we're going to have to start budgeting some, some money away for, and that may be under the Capitol, for some equipment replacement throughout the city buildings. As you notice on oh seven one, which is demolitions, that increase kind of reflects the, the grant we applied for through IDA, and then the possibility of that revenue source as far as the vacant and foreclosed property registration program that we're looking at asking for, for you. That's pretty much it. We saw, we saw a reduction in one twenty-one, which was the cleaning and maintenance supplies. I think what, you know, having, having kind of a little more control over what, you know, what's ordered, how much we have in stock, and, and what our needs are, we were able to reduce that by about five thousand. So hopefully that'll, that'll keep in line with that five thousand dollar reduction. But besides that, that's pretty much it as far as the operations side of it. Any questions?
Robert, the position that you spoke of briefly, are we talking about a full-time position, part-time position?
You know, I think that discussion, I mean, we would need somebody possibly full-time. That's what we'd like. And I'll kind of, you know, right now, we got somewhere around sixty buildings that we maintain, I mean, throughout Public Works. I mean, obviously, City Hall, all of the east side and concession buildings. And quite frankly, it's a lot for two people. So we have a coordinator right now, that's, you know, not including myself, that, you know, that, you know, I'll go out there too.
Sure.
And a maintenance tech. And we kind of, you know, when we got that position as far as the maintenance tech, we're kind of really focusing on HVAC and kind of keeping our, keeping our mechanical systems up and, up and going and, and replacing a lot of the older inefficient equipment, trying to keep it housed, you know, within the city staff.
What sort of cost would you expect for a position like this?
I would think an entry level would, would be probably around that thirty thousand. I think that's about what we thought. Yeah.
So with benefits, probably fifty?
Probably, yeah.
If with such a position could, I mean, every department has building maintenance. I mean, do you, if within their line items, would you expect cost savings by not farming things out? Or what's the balance?
Absolutely. I mean, some of the things, you know, what we've talked about is, like painting, for example. I mean, you know, we have a painting contractor that comes out and does some, some of our painting for us that we can't, we just can't get to all the buildings and, you know, it's just impossible. But that would be a savings, that that person would be doing a lot of the painting, a lot of the light maintenance, as far as filter change outs, keeping, keeping things running, lights, just stuff like that, that would, that would then reduce the technician that's at a higher, much higher rate having to do. So I think as far as cost savings, you know, down there, yeah, it would most definitely be cost efficient to have that, that position helping us out there.
Do you believe it would be enough of a, enough to, I guess, make up the, the fifty thousand? Or is that probably too hopeful?
You know, I think, again, this is an entry level position. There would require some training, some, you know, some other things. So I think that that would be a fair.
Hmm.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. So with respect to planning and development, we have a fairly short list on page four. And largely the same as the previous year, we have a slight adjustment for salaries and wages. And then the only other increase of substance is the consultant's fees. And that is to account for, while we typically use this for appraisals and survey work if it's needed, this is to account for the aerial photography project with the county. And so there'd be a reoccurring, it's like seventy-two fifty, charge in that for aerial photography and topography that we'll get access to later this year. So we're, we're looking forward to that. But that's really the only significant changes of the budget. Real briefly, one thing I'd like to take the opportunity to do is to talk about some of the things that we've been working on in the department over the past year and some things that we're looking forward to. I will mention that residential development in East Peoria, just single family, which is a housing starch, which is kind of a bellwether for economic development health and that sort of thing. And of course, we're hearing increasing, the, the increase in the, the interest rates is going to maybe have some effect on that. We had thirty-five new housing starts this past year, which we think is a really good number. It's not where we were pre-two thousand eight bubble. You know, we were in the sixties and, you know, other communities like our neighbors to the east in Washington, we're seeing over a hundred new housing starts a year at a time. Now everybody's fell off quite a bit. But thirty-five is a pretty respectable number considering we have just really a handful of potential locations to develop that. So we're pretty excited about that. And, and look for that, that number to continue, although it may trail off a little bit in this coming year. Multi-family development, we continue to look for opportunities for that to occur, both here in the Levy District and throughout the community. Out on Centennial, we have the, the new multi-family development that's going on right now. They have completed their second building, they're leasing that up, and anticipate starting a third one here in, in springtime. So we're excited to see that continue to go. They've got opportunities to develop. I think it's another, is it eight buildings? It's got quite a bit more room to grow out there. So we're, we're really pleased to see that, that as they fill it up, and it's not taking much time to get those units spoken for, we're seeing that happen quickly. So we're, we're hopeful that that spurs other interest. We've been working with IDA on a community redevelopment plan, and that's something that's a year-long process. We started that in the fall last year. We've had some community outreach efforts. So far, we've got another one coming up with the Planning Commission here in a couple of weeks. There was a survey that was, that was put out, and we received over four hundred responses to that. So we felt that was a really good response rate. Looking at everything from, does your community offer healthcare opportunities to looking at housing stock and housing quality. So looking forward to that, that plan and that continued outreach with the community. Rental registration and vacant and foreclosed property registration, these are two programs that we've discussed with the council publicly over the past year. We do have that vacant and foreclosed property registration program that's moving forward. We have an RFP on the street right now that is going to close on Friday. In fact, Robert and I just met with the Peoria Area Association of Realtors Government Affairs Committee today to continue that dialogue, to make sure that we aren't missing components in that program, to ensure that it, we can roll it out in a fashion that, that, you know, there's at least awareness of the program and that we're taking into consideration some of the things that might affect the real estate community. And then also, most recently, we've issued an RFP for city-owned properties to develop. These are properties that are kind of pieces that are within the Levy District, down on the Riverfront, and also in front of Bass Pro. And we look to, we've gotten four responses and look forward to being able to, to work with those respondents and hopefully come back to council with some really good plans. GIS is another one that has become more of an emphasis. We work very closely with the Public Works Department on a number of different items, but we did try to work with them on cleanup week and try and improve that communication piece between when items were left out that shouldn't have been and making sure that they get cleaned up. That has been kind of a, an Achilles heel for us in the past. And I, I think that we went a long way to address those, both on the, the code enforcement side as well as with Public Works and their efforts. And then also, I know that Glenn's been pretty heavily involved with this TC three transition. Their system is transitioning from a CAD system to a GIS-based system. And while this probably doesn't make a whole lot of difference to most people out there, it's exciting to see them starting to embrace this, this GIS-based system that is accepted and used by most public sector entities. And so they're transitioning this. It should mean that reporting function, providing graphic information about what's going on in the communities is going to be easier for them to produce when they, when they go to do that. So looking ahead, we have a request in the, on the Capitol side, and this is for TIF money, but looking at a, the third and final leg of the Camp Street Trail project. And we understand that, that TIF budget is rather tight this year. And so it's something that, it's a request. We can, we can look at other opportunities down the road. But it, it would be nice to complete that phase at some point to connect it down to a trailhead next to Batteries Plus. We also would like to take an opportunity, maybe look a little more closely. I mentioned that RFP that was submitted out that included the Bass Pro property, of the property in front of Bass Pro along I-74. We get very little interest in that property. It has challenges as it relates to its access. We know that there are potential users that are out there. It's trying to get in front of them, those folks, you know, there are, are commercial realtors out there that certainly have good relationships with entertainment-type destination users that might be a good fit. And so we'd like to, to take a little closer look at that. And so whether that's looking at a listing with a commercial realtor, or there are outfits out there that provide plans and opportunities for communities to consider, it's something we'd like to take a closer look at. Levy Park, right out here behind me, the foundation board has that first phase completed. They have other fundraising that's underway right now. And likely, there's probably some participation in acquiring some additional grant funds to help make that work. And that's probably something where staff here at the city is going to be able to help out with, whether it's through IDNR or other funding sources. So looking forward to getting the funding in line so that the next phase and the, the final phase of that project can move forward here in the next year as opposed to years down the road. And then the last one I'll mention is Farmer's Market. And this is a, an item that we're taking a look at, maybe putting a, a refresh on it. Looking at opportunities to introduce some new vendors to the mix, maybe some different food opportunities, something that we're going to continue to, to communicate with the city council and get your thoughts and feedback on before we, we pull the trigger on anything. But that has gone through seven seasons, six of them over here in the Levy District. And I think that there's an opportunity to, to keep it and, and kind of refresh it and, and give it a little, give it a little punch to get some more folks in there. So those are some of the things that we're looking forward to this year. And then, of course, a lot more opportunities with GIS. We now have our GIS coordinator onsite at Public Works one day a week now because of all the, the opportunities that are, are down there to, to work with that, to work with their team and make sure that that information's getting put in the system.
Very good. Anything else?
One thing, Ty discussed relative to Bass Pro, as he was talking about alternatives for developing that property. He and I discussed it yesterday. And essentially, what you're looking at, if you want to market that property, you have two choices. You can either hire a consultant that you're paying upfront to go out and try to garner interest in the property, or you can go with a more traditional real estate broker sort of thing, which you pay on the back end only at the time of the sale. So there's, there's two different ways to go there. Either way, it will cost some money, but in the long run, if they're successful, you have a income generating property. So it's a bit, do you, do you want to pay upfront or on, or when you actually have a result? I know, my two cents on it would be to pay for results. But it's something for the council to consider as to how to best bring that property into production.
Does it cost more as far as results based, like commission?
Well, you know, I, I guess at least on the commission, you're paying for an absolute result. You know what's going to happen on the, the other one may be somewhat cheaper, but.
I tend to agree. I, I would rather.
You're not necessarily paying for a result.
I'm okay paying more, but it would, it would. I'm okay paying more, but it would, it would assure that it gets accomplished.
Yeah. I mean, you know, if you're not going to pay a commission until it's sold and you have someone with an active project.
We've not been too successful in drawing any, so it's probably time to do something.
No, we haven't.
Commissioner, you know, Dinsberger, you know, there are some restrictions on that property just because of the agreement with Bass, with the height and so forth and frontage look, but nothing that can't be overcome.
Right.
And the real value would be down the road eventually. That whole north side, if we've talked about this as a long-term issue, would be better access with another additional way in and out. So that's beyond our discussion here tonight. But you're talking about how we market the property that's there now is one that would be worth us to.
We have to market it as-is.
As it is. Long-term, that they, whoever's going in there knows that maybe down the road sometime, we may have something better.
But I would recommend that the council take a hard look at being more assertive in marketing that property and, and going after a, to bring it into production.
So what you're saying is we need to make that identifiable go with the timetable?
I would recommend that, yes.
Very good. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, you have a sheet in front of you that looks similar to this. It has a summary of revenues. The left column shows the current budget. The middle column is what's projected for this budget year. And then in the right column is the estimated revenues that are currently in the budget that we're working on. Quickly over these, start from the top. Municipal sales tax, we've left flat. We're projected to be up a little bit this year. To be conservative, some pressures are maybe facing our box stores. We thought maybe we should keep that flat. You'll see the biggest increase is in the non-home rule sales tax, which had to do with the tax increase rate that was passed. Looking down the page, the next major one that pops out to me is the Riverboat Gaming Tax. We budgeted four-point-five, we're on track for that. You'll see that we estimated four-point-three for next year. And that's just because we've seen a constant decline from anywhere from one-hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-thousand year-over-year. So we're going to go ahead and project that it's going to happen again next year. And hopefully, we've hit the bottom of that dozen, but.
What was it, eighteen, nineteen?
It was, I think, off the top of my head, four million, six-seventy-five, six-eighty somewhere.
Okay.
And it might, that might actually be back here. Four-six-fifty, and two thousand seventeen was four-eight-oh-six. So it's dropped significantly year after year. And then the rest of those have been pretty much flat or slight increases. Does anybody have any questions on any of those or estimates?
You know, as, as Mr. Becker and I have discussed, the revenue side, it's, it's a little, it's difficult to get too aggressive with pressing these numbers higher because there's so many variables that we're unaware of this year, things that are hanging. We have a new administration in Springfield, we're certainly not. We have no idea what the state's budget may be. And as you'll recall, year before last, the state's budget impacted ours significantly. So that is quite a variable. On the April ballot, there is a one-cent educational sales tax again. That would undoubtedly have a detrimental impact as to the sales tax numbers. And there are various other things hanging out there that would, I believe, inhibit us from being more optimistic on the revenue side.
Any questions? Keep going. The next thing you'll see in front of you, and I'll invite the other department heads that are in the back to come up, is the capital requests. And there's a sheet there summarizing.
Can I, before we get on to this, because this is the big one that everyone's been waiting for, just have a question, I want to direct it towards the council. As we set through these various departments and their budgets, the salaries are all over the map. I think it's pretty prudent to figure out as a council what directives have been given to each department and make sure we're on the same page. Because, for example, Public Works, that was an increase of seven-point-five percent based on the budget they presented last week. Fire Department was flat. Public Works was a little over, or Public Property was three-point-six percent, Police was three-point-one percent. Ty was one-seven-five. When you put dollars to these, I guess my question is, what direction are we giving these departments? And as a city, as we're getting ready to set our priorities, that's pretty important.
After your comments last week, and this is a very quick comment. I spoke with Dennis, and one thing we did realize the, the year before, there were many, or there were positions that went unfilled for quite some time. I'm not going to say that that was the reason, but that did have an impact on the budget as far as the increase that you're speaking about. Most of our positions are bargained, so they, you know, they're stated and they're consistent.
All the contracts are up. So I guess my question is, what is the expectation of this council?
I have another question.
What do you mean? What are, what are we going to put in the budget?
For budgeting purposes, we, I think what Commissioner's getting at is that you should, we should be uniform across the bargaining.
That's all I'm asking.
Across the board with all staff.
It just makes perfect sense.
As to what, projecting what the pay increase would be. And I've, I've got to agree, I think it would be detrimental to have one department saying two-and-a-half, one saying one-seven-five, someone else saying two-and-a-quarter. I think we need to arrive at a number. In the past, it's been one-seven-five because that's what was in our contracts. And using that at least as the benchmark to move forward, rather than having it be inconsistent.
A question regarding early retirement in Public Works. How many of those positions are we bringing back that we were going to say went against the early retirement revenue as far as savings, if any?
We're not, we don't have any plans to bring any additional people.
What we release as far as the supervisors and we're going, according to plan, there, I assume.
Absolutely. We're about three or four people down where we were, you know, three years ago. I think that's an accurate statement. Our contract is one-point-seven-five in Public Works. Police is two-plus right now with their current contract. Fire is about one-nine.
Fire was one-point-seven-five.
With some additional bonus dollars and stipends and things. So there's, I appreciate, you know, that we would be consistent. But I think for Commissioner Dinsberger to say one-seven-five, I think that's what we have in Public Works. We're not giving out more than that on the, on the, on the bargaining increases at all.
The spreadsheet he shared with me was two-and-a-half. But even with that spreadsheet, when you look at the budget, and I'm not picking on Public Works, it's a simple comment for all of us to get on one page and decide. Because when you look at these capital needs, that's relevant.
Oh, absolutely.
I guess my recommendation to answer your question, Commissioner, would be to, let's plug in one-seven-five and realize that that may change their negotiations.
I think that's the only thing we can do. We haven't even discussed starting negotiations yet. So we have no idea what the Teamsters are going to be coming forward with.
So I guess, Mr. Becker, to, for consistency's sake, I would use one-seven-five as the projected increase and go from there.
Okay. I'll get with each department and make sure that their numbers reflect that.
Because that's going to, that's quite honestly going to change some, as we get into the capital expenses, whether or not we have additional funds to spend on those needs.
And realizing that that number may increase.
Correct.
Based on negotiations.
Well, and the overtime amounts that are paid, I mean, some departments are very flat and that don't change because they're not weather-related or et cetera. They're not affected by personnel as much. But, you know, as, now Fire's projected a half-million-dollar, half-a-million-dollar drop approximately, several hundred-thousand-dollar drop in overtime this year, that's very welcome. You know, and that's, that's, hopefully, that's true. And we had at length talked about the extra expense for weather-related items such as plow and snow. We've had a lean winter a couple of years ago, or compared to this time when it hits, but.
This is a bad winter.
So, anyway, point well taken. It's part of our costs, isn't all of our costs, but labor is, as a whole, about eighty percent of our budget.
So we'll make that adjustment.
Back to capital.
Okay. As the budget currently stands, pending adding any clerks and police or help from Robert's department or anything else, we're right at about a million dollars in funds available for capital. The summary sheet on the left lists the fund, the department, and then there's a description of what the item is. And then there's three years of projected out costs. For example, the first one that has got three years of squad cars, they're requesting fourteen this year to make up for not getting any last year. And then projecting out seven, the two years following. Some of the projects I've done at the bottom, Camp and River Road Roundabout, there's some engineering in this current budget year, and then some engineering and construction costs in year two. If everybody kind of understands the way this is laid out, I wanted to make sure that we looked forward at least two years on some of these projects and kind of had a little bit more inclusive view of what these projects were going to cost and kind of see what was laying out there in the next two years just to make sure that everybody was aware of what was coming.
As, as Mr. Becker points out, especially the, there are a couple of big-ticket items. And I know you gentlemen have talked about the Veterans Bridge replacement. That's hanging out there in about two years at two-point-seven. Talking about the Camp and River Road Roundabout, over the next few years, you know, you're talking about one-point-two or thereabout. The other intersection at Riverside and Camp, you know, you're looking at another one-point-two over about a three-year period. So those projects and their ability to move forward are probably the single greatest variables in the capital budget. And something I think as a group, we need to arrive at a strategy as to how and when we move forward there.
I'd rather see that money spent on streets, to be honest with you, but it's my two cents.
More than two cents.
Yeah. The fuel station that's listed on there, that's been a sore subject for years.
The fuel station. Robert, can you speak about that for, for a minute to flesh that out for everyone? I know you and I have talked about it, and it is a significant concern.
You know, it has been in the budget for, for a number of years. The price just keeps going up. Technology gets a little bit better, but, you know, the price keeps going up. Recently, we had a full assessment. You know, someone from the city, I am that selected person that has to be certified as the underground storage tank operator. One of the things that we did recently is had a full assessment through Illinois Petroleum to come out and look at the condition, full condition of our, of our fuel system. And what we noticed, and that is, the dispensers in itself are in non-compliance, they're kind of rusted out. They're kind of original to that nineteen-eighty-six, eighty-seven, when they were first installed. So that, that seventy thousand kind of reflects eighteen thousand dollars' worth of just replacing the two dispensers, getting them up to compliance. The other fifteen, sixteen would be for the automation portion that had been in the budget for a number of years. We kind of shaved that back a little bit, which should save us about fifteen hundred dollars. Actually, I was talking to Illinois Oil Marketing this afternoon about the KEFOP situation. So at one time, we were thinking everyone was going to use their badges and then put in their fleet number and so on and so forth. So I think that by talking to, you know, Mr. Becker and the chief and some others, not everybody has key, key cards. So we thought about just taking that out and just having them use an identification code and then the fleet number and so on. So there is some savings there as far as, as far as that. But the biggest thing on that is the, you know, the accountability and the accounting of the fuel. Right now, we have a system that's broke. We don't have total accountability at the, unfortunately. And it's no, nobody's fault, it's just the way that we've conducted our fuel business. So I think that'll clarify a lot of that. The reports will be sent straight to City Hall for, I think, the billing end of it for Mr. Becker will, will be streamlined and be more efficient. And then I think at the end of the day, the accountability and the, for the fleet purposes, so as you talk about police and the fleet maintenance of the squad cars or other city cars, them reports can be generated and sent on to the fleet maintenance. As far as oil changes, excuse me, and other maintenance-related items on the vehicle, them reports will be based off of mileage.
Currently, we're not, we're not even able to document the number of gallons that go into the vehicles, correct, Robert? At least the screen, the display doesn't show it correctly.
Yeah, we've had some issues, and I think as we started, and I don't have that number, but we've, we've spent a lot of money to, for repairs just to keep this antiquated key. It's like a round key that you put in, and then someone has to come out from the police department every month and read, I think there's thirty-six of these meters that the keys fit in. And then they, and then they go and they put it in a spreadsheet. That spreadsheet then has to be sent downtown. That then goes into another spreadsheet for, for distribution as far as payment. So it's kind of, it's antiquated, I think. As far as efficiency for staff, it's a no-brainer.
I was speaking with Robert a few weeks ago about this, and I think you said that we're not even able to get the parts to fix the pumps that are currently there.
I think this would take care of it, you know, and we always struggle with, should we be in the fuel business or should we get fleet cards? And I think it was all, you know, Mr. Becker may add to this, but I think, you know, it's convenient. The, the price is much cheaper than if you had, if you went to Thornton's or wherever. So, you know, unfortunately, you have to maintain them, you got to keep people certified on staff, as myself. And, and that's just one of those things, it's, it's operations. We just need to continue to maintain the system if we're going to be in the fuel business.
So we're virtually to the point where we either fix it or get out of the business.
Well, let me ask a question, as when you asked that, Robert. If we were out of the business, are there certain, I guess, upgrades that would be needed to some of the, the stores around to provide fuel at all hours, no matter what stormed or whatever, to make sure that the emergency vehicles have appropriate fuel?
You know, that was, being from the, you know, from the days of the tornado and having most of our city without power, that was a grave concern as far as, if we did eliminate the fuel system, you know, where would we go? And would we have to provide generator backup for them to ensure that, you know, all of our, you know, police and fire vehicles were able to fuel up? So that was one of the things. But I want to point out too, and that is, there's still a cost if we get out of the business. I mean, you have to remove the tanks, you've got to remediate the, the site. And that's, as most of you know, that, that's years of pain just to get rid of, you know.
And that's probably more than seventy thousand dollars.
Excuse me?
That's probably more than seventy thousand dollars.
I, yeah, I would imagine, I don't know that.
You're saying it's a priority?
I think it's a priority.
I think it's been a priority for years. It got ignored. Past, past point.
I certainly think it is. It's, I think we've done a good job making do with what we have, but it's to the point where it's inefficient. And there are a lot, a lot more things we could do if we had an upgraded system.
More accountable.
Become much more efficient.
If you'd like, I can speak about the rest of the items in the capital that, I mean, obviously, that was only thirty, thirty-some thousand, but.
That fuel station is packaged in with the parking lot improvements over at the PD as well. And there's what Robert's going to speak to.
So it's not that seventy is also parking.
So it's not that seventy is also parking lot repairs?
And some other stuff. I mean, basically, it's about eight thousand dollars to have the parking lot patched. I thank Rick Samoski for sending the guys down and do a lot of that cutting and patching of the larger areas that were really concerning as far as the safety of the officers and the fire staff. But, so that's eight thousand that would do all of the crack filling and sealing. It's been, I think it's been almost a decade since we had that sealed. And then they would re-stripe, I think there's some configurations that we were looking into as far as staff parking and others that would be included in that. The other thing I included too in the is some HVAC replacements and two of, we're looking at four, actually five. One had, we had an emergency, one of the units, the heat exchanger cracked and we were, we were very concerned. So we, right now, we're installing that ourselves at the Festival of Lights building. But we, the other four were basically replacements, two at East Side, the lower aerobics room, and two at Police, and that would final out all of the replacements for that building, including fire side of it, which is eighteen thousand. We would get four thousand dollars back, excuse me, from Ameren on a rebate for both, so that'd be eight back. That's how, I mean, I can give you this spreadsheet, it kind of describes that, so that's, that is included in that also.
Mr. Becker, Jeff, I have a request as to see if maybe this is not, maybe the numbers aren't there, I know we have them in Public Works. Could we, you've shown three years here, capital numbers here.
Correct.
My view is that really the next five to ten years is where we have this real trough area of where we're short capital dollars as a whole. Because of, we know our debt load's dropping, our receipts are, the debt load dropping and therefore there's more dollars available in the out years. Could we perhaps have a five, even up to a ten-year, the departments have a ten-year capital plan that they could submit? And we could just keep that in front of us, and we've had that before, and I think that would help us get our head around this and future councils as well to know that, all right, we've got a short-term plan, we're getting a budget for this year, I get that, I understand that. But looking ahead, now here we, you know, this is great, but people need to know where we're headed and so forth, and so we don't make decisions based on only even a three-year window.
Well, I think, I agree, Commissioner, and you know, that's, that's something that the department heads can project it, you know, I'm sure that Mr. Barron probably has that sitting on a spreadsheet somewhere. Relatively certain that Chief Knapp does. I'd be shocked if the PD doesn't have something very similar. So I guess, you know, if you want to send in a five to seven-year projection, that's, you know, something Jeff can simply lay into this.
I think that would help, it's information for our reference, okay? Look, police are showing a regular schedule of their vehicle purchases, I understand that. There's an ambulance schedule based on the number we have for fire and so forth, that's more regular. The large equipment purchases such as the platform truck and so forth, those are spread out over a longer period, but yet they're, they're coming, there they are. Frankly, fun, you know, the street paving ought to have its own line item every year as well, you know, as part of this. For example, I understand police is concerned, they didn't get any cars last year, so they double up this year, okay? If you want to do that with the rest of us, which we could do, it makes it tough when you get behind. Streets is a zero, well, really, maybe it should have been a million dollars a year, but now we need two million, you get what I'm saying? I'm not being critical, we work with what we have to make a budget. But to see the big picture, where we're headed out, knowing our capital requests, but at the same time, as the treasurer, projecting out for capital revenue as well.
Well, I think that might be a particularly good idea this year, as come May, we will certainly have a substantially different council and the new folks up here should have that information in front of them to see just what they're getting themselves into.
The expenditures that spread out, five to seven, and then also projected revenue as we see our debt load drop and receipts, I think it gives us a better picture where we're headed and as, we have some options here to finance these large, large purchases that lets you have that information accordingly, so.
I think it's a good idea. If you look at the debt schedule, it'll pop off about fifty percent barring that we don't add to it in two thousand twenty-eight, so.
So that's, that's the big story, that's the big picture that I know as a department, I know we have, Public Works, I say we, you know, we've got Kerfoot Bridge, two and a half million dollars, but it's out there at about year twenty, twenty-three or twenty-four. So it's just right beyond this chart, that's two and a half million.
I like the idea, I know we've done it in the past and I think probably, if everybody thinks about it, we, we were on track to do that and then the downturn in the economy, we kind of stopped having the ability to keep up. And I think it just became somewhat depressing, keep projecting the needs, but yet nothing was bought, so I think we should get back to that.
What happened, part of it was, there was a big drain on our reserves and so forth due to legislation, some changes with our pension payments that were unforeseen. That's part of it, so we tend to go year to year, we have to, but at the same time, we need to keep the ball out there in front where we see what's going on. So that's, if we can do that, we probably have the numbers, we realize these are ballpark and somewhat accurate, but ballpark, we know what our mandates are, I would appreciate that if we could have that as part of our discussion down the road.
I think that moving forward, the, perhaps the single biggest variable that we have out there is, I believe, the governor, in the past week or so, has created a commission to take a look at the state's pension problems. For the city, that may be a good thing. I suspect it won't be. But it's a huge problem and how that is addressed is going to impact virtually everything, from how, you know, how the city budgets and the city's contribution, which with, but with the pensions, all the city does is write the check. We don't decide the benefit, we don't decide anything else, we just write the check. It's the way the game's designed, and so how those pensions are dealt with is going to be something that has, is going to have to be monitored very carefully because, you know, the city of East Peoria has historically, and I hope will continue to follow actuarial recommendations and move toward the goal of funding. But how that plays out in the not-too-distant future is going to be a huge variable for the city.
So where are we at for this budget?
Pardon me?
Where are we at with this budget as far as?
Uh, we need to talk about capital, Your Honor. And I guess that's the next session, I don't think we're really prepared to do that tonight, but next week, I think we need to be prepared to talk about priorities on this list and anything else that may hit it and, you know, how to address the significant road projects that are out there as well as street paving.
Now, I just want a real quick note, kind of dovetailing off Commissioner Jeffers' idea here. I texted the chief, which I don't normally use my phone during meetings, but I was just curious on these capital expenses, you know, how the fire department has spread out some of these expenditures over a number of years, if that's a possibility. And I would just encourage other departments to look at that and see if that's a possibility to share with this council so we can openly discuss that and consider that next week, so.
I appreciate that, Commissioner, we certainly will.
Well, some of these large ones, it takes you a while to get them.
Yeah, well, that's just it.
You know, it's, it'll be, if you ordered it today, you might get it next budget year. So that may be an extreme, but the large, large machines that they're on allocation, they're hand-built basically and for special order and it's the way it is, so. Anyway, that's how you bridge your budget here, since we're not a calendar year, we go by mid-year and so forth, so.
Mr. Becker, is that kind of where we're at?
Yeah, that's how I would say it.
So then I assume you'll recalculate some of the information that we've discussed as far as salaries go?
Yes, I'll meet with the department heads and make sure.
So we know exactly what we're looking at?
What we have and what we.
Do you have any feedback on the additional personnel requested? Because I'll update the budget after.
Yeah, because obviously that's not included in these needs, so.
Correct.
East Side had a modification too, as you know, I think, as far as the staff.
And I'll talk to Mr. McCarty, I'm not sure.
We'll get the supplemental on that to council.
Maybe if we can have those numbers available, what the cost would be per employee, whatever their requests are.
Okay.
So we can put some actual numbers, estimated, of course, but I mean, just give us an idea as you're throwing it out there.
And, you know, I would encourage the department heads, rather than just the numbers, which I agree, you have to have those, but perhaps some description as to what the savings we're expecting, you know, cost benefit here might be, such as for a additional maintenance person or whatever that position may be.
There's another area, Jeff, you didn't mention that, there's a dire need for more clerical, I'm not talking high level, but as far as, if we could re-appropriate some of Lisa's time perhaps to help Teresa and the rest of staff, instead of channeling all the different scheduling she does here, which takes just a tremendous amount of time, we might be able to supplement HR, because there's a real need, I think you'll agree with that.
Should be. I appreciate you bringing that up because I had a note to ask you about that, I was going to do it privately, but.
That has not been included, but.
I was going to ask if.
You know, and part of that conversation, Your Honor, is, you know, to say we needed, I absolutely agree, I've been asking for an HR person for about ten years.
It's not as long as Teresa, but.
They came up with a solution.
And, but the point is, what are you going to hire? Are we hiring one or two lower-level HR people or are we going for more of a director position here, what do you want?
Well, what we can afford, what they've came, come up with is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, relieving Lisa's, some of her clerical duties, we could use her for HR because she's able to do those higher-end things. But right now, she's preoccupied with many other tasks.
Yeah, honestly, what.
But that's a Band-Aid, Commissioner.
I've heard, speaking with Dennis and some others, that we may be able to, by hiring the right HR person, ultimately save money because we wouldn't have to rely on our attorney's office to handle many of the HR issues that unfortunately are needed now.
Well, I'll kind of defend Teresa in a sense, I mean, I just look at her company and the HR department with the number of employees, we have, what, two hundred employees?
Our HR situation is.
There's, I don't care who you are, you're not going to be able.
You'll find a company with that many employees.
Let me put it to the council this way, I will, Mr. Becker and I will talk about it, we'll do a little bit of research and we will place a HR position into the budget.
Did we not have some funds allocated this year?
I thought we did this year.
And we just never did come up with the description, or am I wrong?
The decision's never been made, so.
But the funds were allocated.
Brought it up every year.
So I guess my question was, do they remain in this budget, did they roll over?
That's a good question.
I know we allocated.
I think we have last two years, if I'm not mistaken.
I know, at least for a fact last year.
Yeah, they're not currently in there, they've been cut each year.
Appreciate you looking at it, we do. Any other comments from the council? Comments from the audience, anybody want to come forward and speak, you're welcome to.
Oh, you got a taker back there, I see him on the move, oh, there he goes.
Welcome, Charlie.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Hi, Charlie.
I followed all of this and I just have a few comments. And first of all, all the department heads in this city are doing a terrific job and the employees trying to get by, excuse me, on what they have. Public Works don't even need to go into the building, it's junk. We don't have enough equipment out there to do the work on the vehicles when they're in there. You get something up on a rack and you got to wait for something to come to work on a piece of equipment. Most of the, fifty percent of their equipment is either in need of repair or inoperable all the time. Roads are a completely different discussion, won't even go into that. We saw this coming, we didn't do anything. East Side, all department heads do a terrific job, but if we don't update East Side, we're going to continue to lose people. I've talked to people, they didn't quit exercising, they went to Washington and they went to Peoria. Our facility needs work. Police Department, running a squad car twenty-four seven is the dumbest idea I've heard lately. They did that fifty years ago and it didn't work. Ben Roach brought them here in the seventies where we all had a car, saved money, but you got to feed the program like you're supposed to or within, and it's maybe quicker now, chief, but back then in the seventies, and then we lost them and got them back. If you went more than four years with buying cars, you were deep in trouble and the program was losing money. If you stay with that program, it will save you money. Twenty-four seven, there's somebody waiting there for a car to come in to take a call, okay? All right. You have two openings in the police department, fill them. You have two openings right now, that's just going to put you at the bare minimums, and if you don't fill them in this budget, it's going to cost you a lot of money. Getting back to the two cars, you think this is the first tornado we had? We had a real tornado in the eighties that took the top off of Atlas Auto, part of the Nighthawk Tavern and damaged Summerfield's Hardware right at Four Corners. Dick Dodson was mayor. We had people there like that because everybody had their squad cars, including the detectives. Everybody was down here in this area that quick, that's another reason you want those cars ready. Fire Department, as of February the eighteenth, with any luck, you're going to be a full complement, okay? I did hear in the budget hearings tonight that you are looking at budgeting money to keep things repaired. You have to do that because all you have to do is remember that fire a little over a year ago at those apartments out by the college, and I didn't realize how much labor a ladder truck uses going up and down and that's. They put the ladder truck up and all the fluid ran out of the hydraulics, they couldn't get it up, had to call somebody in, that we don't want. Now, second of all, first of all, I want to agree with you on the pensions. The city council has always come real close to the actuary, sometimes we had to push a little bit. But I think these mandates are ridiculous, okay? I've never said that, but they are ridiculous now, what they want this funded, it can't be done by the average municipality. Million dollars in capital for spending, that's not good at all, is that what I understood, that's what we have to spend? Well, maybe we ought to just do away with this Camp Street Roundabout. Ah, you know how I am about roundabouts anyway, well, that's a, looks to me like one million, two-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars we're going to end up spending, at least. Put that in our roads, just do away with it. I know you're afraid you're going to make somebody unhappy in Springfield, well, let them build a roundabout if they think they, we need one, they can, okay? Early retirement. Now, we were told that this was going to work, some of us didn't think it would, including Commissioner Call, and I was another one, along with other people. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, last year, we did not have the money, it had to come out of our, I don't know where you got it to pay our first installment, but we didn't have our first installment put aside, am I correct? If I'm not correct, correct me. If I'm not correct, correct me. So, you know, I don't blame the employees for taking it, but what I'm saying is now you're short in Public Works. Well, we weren't going to be short anywhere the way I understood this, so either I was not paying attention or the numbers didn't come together like everybody thought they were going to. Do we have the money to make the payment this year? I don't think we do if we're this tight. So this early retirement has really not done what it was supposed to do. 30-plus million, is that the figure for the new sewage plant? Somewhere around 30 million?
No, it's probably 40.
40?
For the first three phases.
Okay. Well, you know, I kept saying all along, why weren't we putting money away? And I kept being told, you can't make a profit on that. Well, guess what? You found out you could have. Now, who dropped that ball? And why didn't somebody here 10 years ago find out the absolute truth? Make some increases annually for what's got to be done? Put some money aside? So now we just borrowed another 40 million. I'm just telling you, this is not working. Gaming. We lost boat revenue. The people making the money on these machines, the state has said, are the people that own the machines. That's what was in the paper and I verified that. These people are making a little in these machines they have, but the people making the money are the people that own the machines and East Peoria lost a lot of money from that boat. Okay, I'm just about done. Oh, you didn't turn the...
I do have my time running and you are done, so... Finish up.
I am, okay. Well, they tore me out. We need to stop borrowing, get back to basic services and have a decent reserve. There's one more thing. Bass Pro. I love Bass Pro. I don't love it $43 million worth. I've made that very plain. I didn't realize that we have to take care of that building. Thanks for informing me because last council meeting, Commissioner Densberger, well, we got to fix it. We own it. Holy cow! So we're going to fix the roof. We take care of plumbing, all that stuff, so we must have Public Works people up there at times doing some things. Somebody's got to be doing it or you're contracting it out. That was a poor investment. Love it. Love the store, don't love owning it. And if you want to know what the anchor is in this Levy District, I watch everything. I check parking lots. I see who's coming out with bags and who... I know, I need to get a hobby. I'm sure you think that that is. It's Costco. That's the baby that is the anchor.
Tie it up, please, Charlie.
Tie it up, please.
I'm tying it up right now. We are one disaster away from terrible consequences with our reserve. The next mayor and city council need to move in a new direction. Now I'll tie it up. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
It's going to be a tough year.
Thank you, Charlie.
Just like last year. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing no one come forward, is there a motion to adjourn this session, please?
So moved.
Commissioner Call, second?
Second.
Commissioner Densberger, roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Densberger?
Aye.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Call?
Aye.
Mayor Mingus?
Aye.
All present, Friday.
We are adjourned. Thank you.[1775.48]